...formal calling to order, but this is the beginning of the work session. First item, I'd like to recognize the downtown alliance group with, I think, Jackie and...
I'm not in here. Somebody else can be.
What's Jerry here for?
To show you something else.
I thought that was you. Okay. Come on, you're up, guy.
Oh, this is mine.
Last, last thing we talked about.
Why aren't you here for what we did last night?
All business or something. I think that's what he said.
They called out all the care.
Yeah, that's what he said. All business for last time.
Yeah. I said, "I'm the whole of the care."
You've got yours, Brian.
I've got it all in the, uh, somebody else's. Am I enough?
Yes, sir. I just have one. I remember what the reason I said that was because these are dark.
Well, I mean, if you're running short.
You know, I got, you got yours? Your copy? Tell me your bid.
I'm good. I'm coming in.
Okay, so, um, yeah. All right. Let me just get everything out of the way. I'm sorry about the hick of saying I spoke to him thirty minutes ago. All right, so... I had another brochure, and I don't know what happened to it. We was in a meeting, and I thought Amy might have had it, and I tried to talk to her this afternoon, and I didn't do it. It was talking about... Do I have it? No, sir, you don't. Okay. That was not in the, in that meeting, but we had a meeting two days ago, and there was a book that had some, um, signs on it, and I was gonna show you all that, because we're gonna talk about that later as well. All right, let me start. And it comes back from revolving all the way around after the last council meeting, which didn't go too well for my, uh, for my experience. Um, I met, I went after that and met with the county, and the county, they went sound. And so, went back to the county, and, um, so, I talked to them, and I asked them, I said, "Can we, uh, allow y'all to do the sound for the, uh, in front of the courthouse?" And Robert said, "Yes," and said, "Well, I gotta have the, Becky and Jerry gotta be on board." So, we talked about it, and, uh, so Robert had some concerns, and he said, "Can we get Darren to come back uptown?" And I said, "Sure." In fact, when I leave the meeting, I'll let you know here in a few minutes. And sure enough, I did, and fifteen minutes later, he said, "We'd be there the next day," which we were. Robert's concern was that there was no, um, he didn't think the sound quality was as good as he wanted, and so, he didn't think it was loud as it wanted. He said, "I wanna run, see the cars run about down the street and see what's going on." So, we went up there and did it again. Now, the first presentation, there was only two, uh, there was two speakers up in a tree and a subwoofer. The second application was four speakers, but they were laying on the ground, they were not in the tree, and the subwoofer is a twelve, ten-inch subwoofer, but we're getting a twelve-inch subwoofer, which is more bass. So, uh, Robert wanted to hear it wide open, so we turned it wide open, and they went all the way up above Dane Westbrooks, and then we went down to Hallmark, and you could hear it very, very well, as they said. So, after that meeting, um, Robert said, uh, Becky had to leave a little bit early, so Robert said, "Jack, I'll do this," but he said, "I gotta make sure everybody's on board." And I'm talking about the downtown area. And so, I said, "Well, Robert, what you want me to do?" He said, "Well, you're gonna have to get signatures from the people down the street to make sure that everybody's on the board to do this." And I said, "Okay, so you want me to go and get signatures from everybody that owns a business to say that they wanna do this lighting system and, as well as the, uh, sound system?" So, with that, I left that meeting and started going up and down the street. I, um, went up and down the street several times, and I still got three people that I haven't talked to. Um, and so, we got the money to purchase the lights. In fact, we got over the money that we need. Uh, there was a couple of people who had some questions about what was going on, and I've seen those today, and I feel they feel, I think they feel more comfortable with what happened and the process and so on and so forth. Now, I'll say this, uh, and I'll just be honest with you, I made three phone calls today, and I've got two more people added to it. And one of those was a bank. I thought it would be difficult, but they said, "No. We wanna be a part of the growing community in downtown Jasper. We're on board with this. Our investors want this, and that's what's gonna happen." So, they, he said, "Send me the documents," which I'm gonna send you this. I'm gonna send them a picture of these lights, so they can see what it looks like, if that's concealed on the, on the top of the buildings. And, um, he said, "We're on board." In fact, he called me once, and then he called me back in fifteen minutes, and he said, "My investors are all in, so they're all in."
They really do.
Uh, so then, I called another bank, and the person that I needed to talk to about that one said, "I don't think it's gonna be an issue, so that I'll get back with you shortly." And I didn't hear from them, of course, I left a little bit early. But anyway, gentlemen, I have, and ladies, I have had a unbelievable response from the community of the downtown area. I, I left the meeting the other night, or the other morning, excuse me, and, uh, to be honest with you, I was gonna put the question on hold as far as their lights. I went to two or three people, and they said, "Uh-uh, we're doing this. We're not, we're not backing down. We wanna do this. This is what, the downtown community wants this done, so we're gonna do it." So, with that, I changed my response and said, "Okay, we'll do it, and I'll do whatever y'all want me to do." So, that's what I've started doing. Like I said, I've got three or four, uh, businesses that I have not been to, but we've got the money. And now, I've got to go and get a document that an attorney can write, uh, to make sure that we're not doing anything illegal with the buildings or whatever, and get signatures to take to Robert, so that we can get the sound system put in, and we can produce lighting on the tops of buildings, and that's what you're seeing there. Um, so, your response is, "Well, how quick can you get this done?" I talked to the lady two days ago, and I've talked to her again. They can do this in two days. Um, and it can be done next week. Uh, the lady that I needed to talk to was not there. Now, I'm gonna say something else here in a minute. We, y'all wanted another bid, so we got another bid, and this is Universal Concepts, that's a company in Georgia who does a lot of this, and so, it's the same price, ten thousand dollars, although the lights are a little bit different. By the way, those lights are eighty-five cents a piece. They're one watt, they're low intensity. There's one cable per building. It stretches from Jasper Drug Store to Weeks, uh, George's Store. It goes from George Weaver's to Miller's Building. It goes from Luke Coleman's Building to Ann Marger's Building. So, there's one wire. You hook it up, and it's there. You unplug it, and it'll turn off, whatever. Um, that's the part of the lights. Those are low and, um, like I said, one watt.
One-ten.
Yeah, one-ten, and, uh, the wattage is, you know, is minimal. Um, I've been overwhelmed by people coming up to me and saying, "Let's do this." So, like I said, coming back from that, I said, "Okay, well, I'm gonna go ahead and start with this." Any questions about, okay, maybe back up to me and then go a little bit further, 'cause we're all about processes, okay? So, I called the lady that does this for a living, and I said, "Ma'am, if you were going to a town, what would be the first thing you would do in a project for Christmas lights or lighting?" She said, "I'd do exactly what you're doing, putting it on top of buildings." I said, "Well, what would you do for the second thing? If you notice there's phase one and phase two, then I would start putting it on trees." So, that's what that is. Phase three is what you wanna do with, um, the accents. In other words, uh, I met with the mayor today this morning, and I said, "You know, where would you like to do an accent lights? You know, a Christmas tree setting, uh, way in the major wood?" And he said, "I don't know." And I said, "Well, we need to start thinking about it, 'cause this is gonna..."
I think I said Woodbridge.
Yeah, you did say Woodbridge, that's right. So, anyway, we just need to start thinking about this, and we're not gonna do this all at one time, no. We're gonna do this in phases, and that's what everybody else does. Ballroom, the lights down there are done, uh, this company did them, and of course, it doesn't look like much, but there's a process, and so, they're doing the same thing we're doing. They're starting off slow and proceeding on to do better, bigger and better things. So, with that, I said, "Would you do a presentation for the council and the mayor?" "Absolutely." And so, what I'm gonna do is bring her over here, we're gonna line up down the streets, get her to formulate some kind of, um, project that we can do, and get the, how much it's gonna be, and, and she's gonna come in here and do a presentation for you. And, uh, no expense involved in that, and we're only thirty miles from here, so she's, she's going home about it. But anyway, I just wanted to do something that y'all wanted to do and, and have some kind of organization about what we're trying to do. Has anybody got any questions now?
Do we have a price for this?
Uh, no, we don't. The only thing that I've got priced right now is the lights on top.
So, all four buildings is two grand, about ten grand?
Not all four buildings, all six buildings.
Six buildings. Well, I thought it was four, four blocks?
Six blocks. Just six blocks. It's starting at sixty-one main and going to the E.P., uh, Carol.
What about the guy that has, that has the property down there, sixty-one main, towards sixty-one main, that we're having so much trouble maintaining this build? We just gonna run over that?
The guy from California, the...
Well, yeah, and that's, that's one thing, well, okay, so here's, all right, so I went to the two tenants, uh, and I'm saying Serendipity and Daisy, and both of them agreed to it. So, that's, that's where that money's coming from. The, the, and I don't know if the dentist owns the mon, if he's part of, I don't think he's...
He does. Yeah, he owns his own.
That's what I thought, but the next building to it, it's, that's apartment, I think, in Southern, we just have to skip. But you're right, he's from California, I think, and that, Johnny, what you said. Uh, so, we don't have his, but we got the two tenants, and we're doing it.
Well, at, uh, at our last meeting, we had concerns about, uh, the buy-in of the, of the merchants and the property owners. Uh, what I understand, and Jackie, you mind if you go and ask?
No, you're the one who wants to know.
They have committed ten thousand dollars?
Yes.
To the project?
Actually, we got over ten thousand dollars.
Um, and it's not just downtown merchants, there's some other people, I think, that...
And that's what I was gonna say, there's two friends who's gonna do it as well.
The, uh, other thing was, we wanted a start to a, uh, a plan, and I think this phase is that start. It's phased system. So, uh, what I would like to happen is this, uh, we, we formed a committee.
And then?
Uh, yeah. You know, I don't know how long it would take the committee to make a recommendation, but, uh, if, if way be clear, I'd like...
The committee is from where?
They wanted you to sign.
And John?
Oh, yeah, I thought you, I thought you were talking about from downtown lights, had a committee. You're talking about our, our committee, okay. I lost you there, John.
No, and our committee maybe come up with the recommendation with this.
Well, I mean, I'll be honest with you, with LED lights, it's definitely the way to go. But where do we pick up power source at?
On the top of my building, on top of George Weaver's building, they got plugs. Now, um, I'll have to see about Wingsology, and then, uh, let's see where else is. Okay, the bikes got their own, uh, which I'm talking about, bike across the street there. And so, that's pretty much it, and it's one twenty-inch wire.
Okay, the other question I'll have is, I think it looks great. I like to sit like this all year round, but is it only on the holidays and, uh, July? Or how would we do it? 'Cause I'll be honest with you, that looks awesome. I mean, they're, that's the good...
Well, to think, and excuse me for interruption. Um, we can use it whenever we want to. We wanna do it for a special presentation. We want the community, everybody's saying, "Okay, so, you know, we want downtown area to blossom, we want it to cherish, we want it to grow, we want it to set forth a precedent that we wanna do something in downtown." And so, that's why the downtown merchants have came together and said, "We wanna do this." It's great.
Now, this is not the Downtown Merchants Association, this is...
No, this is just downtown merchants and business owners.
Do we have a clarification? We talked about the legality on property.
Well, this is, they're talking about doing it to themselves.
Wow.
So, and Jackie's basically here tonight informing us, uh, what they intend to do, because they're builders.
Well, I know one time we had talked about the city paying power bill and doing, I mean, you know, that kind of stuff.
Well, I don't know how much this is gonna cost. Somebody said the other day, we was in a meeting, it was very pennies. I mean, I'll pay you that.
No, and I'm just, I mean, I just wanna make sure...
I know, I'm just saying, I understand what you're saying. I'll do, you know, and we can do something down the road, but to answer your question, John, I mean, so, fourth of July, Jasper Jeep, uh, um...
Same Jeep, just a...
Anything, Valentine Day, Mother's Day, the ladies, and I'm telling you...
Jasper thing.
Uh, that, the, the ladies that came up with some formulations, and I say formulations, some programs to do throughout the year, and I think y'all are gonna be impressed with it. I've already talked to Carrie Simmons, and I'm gonna tell you, y'all, she is just like me, she's gonna go in there with both feet, and it doesn't make any difference what you say, she's gonna do what she's gonna do. So, that's gonna happen. Um, this thing's gonna work, folks, and we're, we're just waiting, I wanted to let y'all know. But the thing that I want y'all to know is, it's a process, and we gotta get on this road to a fine, what, define what we wanna do in our community, and so, I think this is the way to get us started.
Well, John, I appreciate all the work you put into it.
Well, I appreciate, and you know, and that is, and again, everybody says me, it's not about me, folks, it's about this community. I want the people and the kids to have some fun, and, and I want these people to come back, those people that are leaving and going to Atlanta, I wanna come back and say, "Hey, this town's growing. This thing is doing the things we wanna do." That's what I try to do.
This company's been around, what, twenty-five years or something?
Twenty-five to thirty years. They do, I mean, they do Mobile Alabama, they do, it's up and down the road.
Good stock.
Yeah.
Six flags.
Uh, Six Flags, Lake Lanier, uh, they do LJ, Hawa'i, Canton. When I was there, she took me through the plan, and by the way, there's the string of lights, I didn't cut them off. And the mayor couldn't believe, let me see that, John, and you may know what's going on, when I showed him this, he said, "How the heck are they doing it? They cut the line off, and it's still working, and it does." Uh, you know, usually you have to have an end to it, and you gotta, well, it just, it works, so...
It's just the end of the line.
The jump is bold. Well, you can cut, you can cut one, the ones you buy at Home Depot, and you lose the system.
No. That's what I was just fixing to ask the question.
You can take that?
If one goes out, we don't have to go over there and see it.
It's not a dependent wire.
And, and the other thing that I, and I'm jumping around here, these are gonna be twelve inches apart. You see that there's a rubber mat on the bottom of it that's pills off, they set them on the ground, and not only do they do that, they come back and put some silicone around it, so the wind and the rain won't mess with it.
I'd lock in the clips, that's what I'm gonna do.
So, um, that's...
But what we were, did you see our old lighting system? You wrap it up, and you had to wrap it back down to tie it into, 'cause you had twenty feet of cord. But you could take this system right here, as far as decorating our trees, and you could have one line up, and then you could come off of that plug, and you go to another line, plug into the system, and you can actually build your little tree versus having the old wraparound look, which doesn't look, won't look like this. Now, I like to see that with smaller lights versus the larger lights, 'cause it actually would do better on a lean.
I think on the copper and...
With these buildings, yeah, they got, I'm talking about for the trees.
Yeah, for the trees, I can...
All right, so this is a seventy-five bulb, and there's an eighty-five bulb, and, uh, you know, you get a seventy-five, this is a seventy-five that's going on top of the building.
Is it daylight or soft?
Sir?
Is it daylight or soft?
I don't know what you're asking.
You probably get either orange bright or...
Is it really bright or...
Yeah, it's real bright, yes.
And an LED?
Yeah, well, you can get the other one.
They do it with the lens. They use an amber lens that gives it that yellow look, or gives that blue look.
Have you collected any money yet?
Uh, no, I, I haven't collected the money, because I, at the time, I didn't know what to do. Uh, I was sitting there, I mean, it's, that's not gonna be, my issue's getting people's good things, you're not gonna get an attorney to write the document and get it over your buddy to sign it, and then go down there and get Robert and get that. I want the city to start playing music. So, I want that to just start blowing and playing music, your holiday season, so people can enjoy it, and I tell you, the first team, these will make us, you know.
And this new group has done a tremendous job in putting things together and attracting people downtown. I mean, we've all fussed about them being gone at three o'clock, you can't shop with them if they're gone, but they are doing some, we really got some workers in the job that they started, I guess.
That's a good color.
Yeah, yeah, it's a good color. And, you know, you see Matthew Dunn's, his lights, his bulb are a little bit bigger than that, but it's, let me, just think about Matthew's house, and it's going continuous all the way up the road there. Uh, one thing that we've talked to the mayor and Carrie, well, I mean, she's got Santa Claus at her shop today, so that's the reason she's not here, and Amy's got something going on as well. Um, but, and, and I'll tell you, I can't do this without them. I know I'm doing all the legwork, but I've still got people telling me, and we're talking, so it's a, it's a mutual group, and I'm not taking the whole responsibility. What I'm saying to you is, Carrie came up with an idea of, they did a SIP and whatever it was called.
Sipping shop.
Sipping shop, yes, ma'am. And, and so, they rode the golf cart up from the parking establishment behind the courthouse. When they drove uptown, they had a map of downtown Jasper, where the locations were, where they were doing, uh, the different locations we're doing, such and so on, and we're trying to get another map for that for the future. So, I mean, that's just, that's small, and that sounds small, but at the same time, I don't know where Jasper Drug Store is even, and, and you, you, I'm talking, we had people from Alpharetta, we had people from other communities come up, we had ninety people going from store to store every day.
Every store.
Every store.
Ninety people in every store.
And then, there was more people than that that didn't, that didn't put their name there, so...
Some of us didn't get to go, 'cause we had a workshop.
Yeah.
We had a workshop.
Hey, yeah.
Now...
Three hour.
Yeah.
All right, so, that's part of it. The other thing that I told the mayor was, and I'm gonna say a couple more words, 'cause I know y'all got lives to live and so on and so forth. Um, the banners that are on the poles right now, I know Tara's been trying to find another location, this company does that as well, uh, and I don't know if she, last time I talked to her, she still didn't have a location, so I'm gonna, and I had a brochure with some stuff on it. One thing that we talked about with the mayor today is, and this is Jerry's idea and Carrie's idea, actually, it was Carrie's idea, is Jerry wants to show us that?
Yes. It's just a conceptual design, and it's, it's mostly the wayfinding sign, one of the issues that people have, a lot of the merchants were concerned about, as well as others, that we don't have signage that helps direct people to retail centers, courthouse parking, things such as that, and, and it's a more difficult issue than you would think for a lot of reasons. But Carrie Roland came up with the idea of maybe utilizing, uh, banners on a, you know, first step basis to start getting some wayfinding signage out into the community. So, we came up with a design that I believe mirrors the new design of the light post signs for the city of Jasper. So, this would just be kind of a rendition of it, incorporating some directions and some key points of interest. And one of the challenges that we had, as well as coming in on fifty-three, we don't really have light posts, we have power poles. So, we had to go through Georgia Power to find out what the criteria was to get permission to put those on the pole, and they did send us that information, and that is something that, that the city will have to be come, be involved with to make this happen. But utilizing this method is something that we can do very quickly. Uh, I think it would be, you know, a good thing to do, again, in the short term, because we could do it very quickly, we could do it very expensively, and, uh, and I think it will help. Uh, again, one of the constant complaints is really the courthouse parking has been one that's come up very frequently. And then, thinking back, if you remember years ago, people were complaining, 'cause there wasn't a Church Street sign out at five fifteen at that intersection, and that was something that I, that I brought to the mayor and the city council, and they acted upon it, and, uh, I don't know if it's helped, it certainly hasn't hurt any, but it has made them feel like that, that we did something to help bring people into the community, and I see this as a similar type initiative.
One thing that we talked about, and Jerry, thank you for what you said, is that, you know, this is a part-time thing. We need to get something up right now, this is gonna be for six or eight months, and then we can come back and do some of these signs. The mayor liked this sign, but whatever sign we put, you know, we were trying to do something earlier, and then we found out about the, uh, our local nurse, our government, saying you gotta do certain things and all that kind of stuff. So, we backed off of it, but this was give us some time to do what we need to do, and get some things established now. I mean, we don't have that many of these signs, but once we get these signs in place, everybody's gonna say, "Wow, this looks good." But in the meantime, this would give us some opportunities for people to find out where the park and where the courthouse is, where the city hall is, and if they could come in from Tate, coming from fifty-three this way, so it would be a, I think, a big, great opportunity for us as well.
Always starting the street sign.
It's gonna be for your presentation, that line.
I've got, I've got the street signs, uh, the first thirty-five of them. They should be here in approximately two weeks, more or less, and then we'll start putting them up, should, according to the Christmas holidays, we should have some up by the end of the year.
With that, guys, I'll leave nothing to any questions. Uh, again, giving y'all, please, appreciate the opportunity to sit down and talk to y'all again, and I think it's something that we can, uh, just build on.
My first response, if I might, uh, when I heard about Jerry snooping around city hall trying to figure out what's going on with the power poles, my first thought was snowflakes, and I didn't respond very well. I called Jerry and apologized, but, uh, and I did. Uh, but, I got thinking about it, a week before I met, uh, Jackie today and Carrie, you, I mean, it's hard to make a power pole look good. I mean, we've done everything we could to take down as many power poles we could in town.
I think they're beautiful.
And, and a good Georgia power man should think that.
I think they're beautiful.
Get through today's payday.
It's, it's kinda like your ugly baby, but, uh, but that being said, thinking about it, that the banners could actually draw away from, uh, the post, and I've never been a fan of banners. I, I'm not a real fan of schools in, "Don't be out," 'cause they attach them about every city pole in town. Uh, I'm glad for kids in school, children are in school, but I'm not necessarily happy with the, uh, banners flapping around, because banners have a tendency to go bad quickly. And we'll have to maintain, once we come with this, that they're gonna have a life expectancy, because your town's gonna look bad in, in a month, once they start fraying, uh, uh, the American flag has to be changed out regularly, it looks bad. So, that's the concern I have, it's gonna have a maintenance schedule, but even if we can't work a deal with Georgia Power, I'm not a real fan of the car lots that's got the flying banner around, but you could make a banner stand, uh, coming into town attached to sidewalk areas. So, there's, we get to negotiate. And John, since you're here, you, you talked to me the last council meeting about hookups for the Christmas ornaments and whatever, for, uh, attached to the poles.
No, they're already on the poles downtown. We're talking, we're talking, we're talking here just banners attachment with no power needs. What can I talk to that? It's, you gotta sign a, you know, a joint use agreement.
And what kind of price?
Uh, that was gonna something you and Brian was gonna have to discuss.
Okay. Uh, I just didn't wanna go back to the seventies, eighties with snowflakes and, and wreaths going on the, attached to the poles, was my response to John.
The thing is, you're down in Alpharetta, they've got them on there, they really look good.
It's hard to see on this picture. Did you notice the garland?
They were in, uh, Asian boys, can't hardly...
And berries.
It was a silent building, yeah, you saw it.
We took, you're finally getting a base painting. We took, you're finally getting a base painting, to look a certain way. Uh, it looked like a chessboard. And they, 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 they actually, I snowflaked this one year, and we finally gave up and went with what we had, Christmas card look, tried to. So, but go back to the banner, what we're trying to look at is, Jerry, you had an example of it, if you would pull that up again, it don't have to be black, it can be all different colors, and you're coming through town, you can visualize this, it don't have to be two feet, it could actually be a six or eight feet foot banner, that you could actually see where the courthouse was, where Coco's Cottage is, where Wingsology is, Jasper Drugstore. Jackie, I was gonna tell Jackie, you heard Jackie say a while ago, he didn't know where the drugstore was? Anybody pick up on that besides me?
I did.
Jackie, what did you say?
It's a block tower, right?
What is, what is the city putting downtown for Christmas?
It's Crossville.
What are you putting downtown for Christmas?
We've already gotten it, pretty much, pretty much you go through town, the trees aren't large enough to handle the lights yet.
That's one thing I was gonna say, the lady said, don't mess with the trees.
I'm the idea is doing that fine.
I know, I know, it's really, it's really kind of depressing when Apple lights on too.
Yeah, well, it's, you know, it, but it's just not something, it's not, the trees aren't big enough to support lights, there's no need to put something.
The wind damage is almost less.
So she just said that's the way to go, and there's something else I was fixing to say there, but I just forgot the word, you know.
But with that, I, I think a six foot banner attached properly in, in stationary to a pole, you could have different colors when you come in in town, you could, you could make it look ornamental versus, and you actually, I might focus on that versus, John, I'll take it personally, the power pole.
Well, what about, I mean, something with that, what?
Well, that, I think it's gonna, it's gonna take a while and more money.
We're gonna get some, but you know, at the end, what you're saying is.
I like that one right there.
Which ever one you want to do, and then make a difference, y'all gonna go with it. It's the, it's the four or five, you don't even gonna need four or five of these downtown. I mean, we, we've established that already, we know where those are, we, we want those that they were over here.
And what's this, and also, this could be something that, if somebody wants to know where the business is, they could actually help pay for that banner to have their name on that banner, it don't have to be a direct expense out of the taxpayer. Uh, it'd be something that, could be a fundraiser. If I wanted, if I had a restaurant north of town, relatively new, or a, or a, or a shop such as Carrie's, she'd know, she really can't tell anybody where a business is.
Exactly right, that's one of the things, she was found frustration, and she made me move downtown, maybe the money.
That's true.
Yeah, we talked about that too. But anyway, thank y'all for giving me the opportunity, I wanted to bring you all today.
Thank you.
And it's just.
So are you gonna order this up or not?
Uh, I, I feel very comfortable about doing it, yes sir.
We appreciate you informing us that you're gonna light your buildings up.
And, so, and I'll keep y'all posted when it's gonna happen, I've gotta get with the lady, I'll try to call her tomorrow, although she's not getting back the money. So probably be in time some next week, but I've also gotta get the signatures, and Carrie and Amy's gonna have to get those signatures.
Okay, what about the sound again, or what do you call the sound?
Well, here's, here's, the sound is, that's, the county's gonna do that, and they said if, and of course, he said, if Becky and him wanted, Jerry, if we get the lights up and everybody's committed to sign for the lights, and he knows that the town's committed, then he would do it, so we'll see. And Darren's, he's, I mean, it ain't gonna take him long to do that. The big thing is getting where it's gonna be, the communication from the speakers to the unit, whether these go inside the courthouse, or you can put something on the outside and use it for whatever net we got.
Jackie, I've visited towns where individual storefronts had their own music.
I got my speaker.
And, and you, I've heard jurors have music outside. Why, this year, why would not people, businesses that wanted, people to be amused when they're walking down the sidewalk, stick out a, I mean, you can buy a seventy-five dollar speaker though, knock the house down. Uh, I'm serious.
I thought they were on the same station.
Same music, I mean, this could be, this could be done.
Back when he had Y Z years ago, when he was reviving, he got with everybody in the stores, and they all put their radios to his station.
Like Christmas music.
And they were doing, and the thing is, is there's nothing saying that the merchants can't do that with a low water J F M station, and put commercials on it, come visit Jasper Drugs, come to the carriage house and have a free cup of coffee with a, with a song.
Well, and you know, you're, and see, this is, okay, we're sitting here talking about this, this is an opportunity that's when we start doing this thing. So we do, uh, but you know, the opportunity's there, and yeah, exactly. The reason my speaker's not working right now, cause because I changed telephones, and it was hooked up to the telephone system that's not hooked up right now, is the next reason.
I remember Max Seymour put music outside her, her shop, and people loved it.
Yeah.
And it could be, and like you said, if it all on the same station, you can do, you have your own FM station in Jasper.
Yeah, and you don't have to have a license, as long as it's less than five watts, you can.
Which is already a station at the top of the paper now.
Right, right. You could put the Christmas music on there.
Well, and that's what we wanna do, so. It's basically what I did at the house. Yep. Oh yeah. Yeah, I, I, like I say, I'm gonna.
I have to turn it down for somebody to let me have it real loud.
I can imagine.
Forgot one of the eyes on it, that's one of those, I don't know what that's called.
I mean, my grandson loves them.
Forgot one of the eyes.
But you, but then you can turn that up, most people on the neighborhood can hear it.
Heck yeah.
Cindy won't let me do it.
Bring it to town.
But if you sure I had it.
Cindy won't let you.
I kinda got in trouble Halloween over it. Uh, again, thank y'all, and.
Thank you, Jack.
I'll keep you posted on whenever things gonna be in place and what's going on.
Good talk to you.
Thank you, Dan.
And you're gonna pursue the banner? You want me to put that back on your office?
Well, you catch you that going that way, I hate to leave it in here. Item B, council is water and sewer update, and it's a water, sewer, and generator update, David, if you will.
Uh.
If you will, if you set right.
I'll get through.
Let me try. Do we lose land again? Proceed on, she can watch the video.
Okay, yeah, and as far as the Christmas lights, the Woodbridge is done, and the water park is done, and there's Bowles, I'll never, my picture down there.
In town.
So our guys finished that up.
Today.
Today, pretty much, so when you leave from here, you can go by and see it, looks real good. Well, as far as on the generator, we've had some problems with the generator over at the well site, it continues to, or it has continued to drop off, and now it's got to the point where it's not even running at all, so Generac is Caldwell, who had the contract through us, has contacted Generac, and Generac has contacted the manufacturer, and they're battling back and forth.
This is the new, the new, one, the new one?
Yes, and the motor is blowed, and the manufacturer wants to replace the motor, and Caldwell wants them to go ahead and replace the generator. So as the updates come, they've got us another portal setting over there, hundred seventy-five KW, so we do have backup if we need it, so we're, should be good on that, I'll keep y'all informed on how that goes. And second thing, we'll talk about is the sewer plant, I'll give all of y'all a copy of, this is just to give y'all an update on what's coming in February, whenever they come, for the workshop in February, I figured y'all wanna update to look at exactly what's gonna be modified and what's gonna be changed. On this, as you see though, it's got chillers and heat exchange, we won't have to do that if we pump it over to the cattle drove to Long Swamp Creek, we won't have to do the chillers on the heat exchange, because the flow is to the point where it, it won't hurt Long Swamp Creek as much as the West Lake.
Our discharge at Po Cat is the creek, about eighty percent, ninety percent?
Well, in the summer, yeah, in the summer, it basically is all of it, but they'll give us more of a credit if we go into Long Swamp, and also too, maybe have an idea, we may be able to get more water out of that creek, then we're putting, you know, eight, nine hundred thousand gallons laid back in it, that were taken out of it and we're putting it back in, so we should be able to get another billion out of it.
It's an argument that we can have with the E P D.
And that's, and also too, I was so surprised when I talked to them, that even if y'all do approve it in February, they're probably looking at two years before even starting the bidding process, so.
And presently, our permit is?
Eight hundred thousand.
We're drawing what?
Uh, right, six hundred thousand a day.
Discharging seven hundred?
Six hundred.
Six hundred, so we're two hundred thousand gallon away from being out of permits.
But you'll have to get the second basin completed before you'll be able to modify the first basin?
Yes, yes, and we'll use it and then go to modify the, the one that's running now. Whenever they originally designed, or the last design that they had, we figured out that we can run better with some of the disc off and on, and it will be easier just to switch some of those out versus having to turn them on and off every day, so that's, they're gonna modify that for us whenever they come to do that.
And the workshop with Mr. Turnipseed is?
February first.
February first, what time?
Uh, six o'clock.
Workshop.
It's your workshop, so we'll be February first at six o'clock. And all of this, I just figured y'all wanna update on that, to give what he's gonna go over and what's gonna be modified at the plant.
I'm sorry, I didn't, see what you're gonna say, go ahead.
I was gonna change subjects if you.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, next, Pittsburgh Tank has got back with us and said, out of the four tanks they checked, only one of them really needed to be cleaned out as soon as possible, and it was the Lily Circle tank, and the cost of that cleaning out is thirty-five hundred dollars.
What about, what about the gray end of the tank?
They're, they're gonna send us a full report on it, this is just, you know, immediate attention that's, you know, gonna be needed.
That's pretty remarkable, it's been a while since Woodbridge has been cleaned out.
Yeah.
How much water will it be to flush?
We'll have to drain it completely, and then.
Two hundred fifty thousand.
Two hundred fifty thousand is the Lily tank, and then fill it back up. But we've got three other tanks in town.
We're gonna leave right over.
Uh, we'll still have Woodbridge, Forestry, and North Tank that will control town even when Lily, uh, Circle tank is off.
What about the Home Depot, I mean, the Walmart tank, North, that'll still be the problem.
It's a different zone, I mean, you could if you wanted.
Still there to eat.
The tanks that love it, but there's the list of other tanks, and even with Lily off, you've still got three tanks, speaking of the towns on, on it, so I don't know, is that something, do you wanna get this?
Is that part of your new program line?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we'll, we'll explain it in a few minutes.
Do you wanna get this approved, maybe not, or?
Uh, it's gonna be on the agenda, council, give you a chance to think about it, the thirty-five hundred?
Yes.
Okay.
For the cleaning of the Lily Circle tank. That's all I got?
No, it's not.
Okay.
Where'd we go last week?
To Tate, Georgia.
But with our engineer, Mr. Turnipseed, and visit with Polycor representing by the name of Marshall Free, and I've only got four copies of this council, I'm gonna leave David in the dark, actually, I'm gonna put David in a light and let's, we'll talk about this. Uh, this is where, we've been, we've been to Marble Hill, Georgia, the old Pickens County well, we became frustrated with the lack of water there, not lack of water there, but the potential for Cinco, then we began to pursue water in Whitestone, and we had a welcome atmosphere in Whitestone, it was not everything that we wanted. But they referred us to Polycor and Tate, so we made a full circle. Mr. Klein and myself went down two weeks ago, met with Mr. Free, he gave us a four-hour presentation plus a tour, and showed us what you're looking at there with the amount of storage, the amount of opportunity that could be at Polycor, and their main opportunity is storage, the Etowah quarry, I think has over fifty-eight million gallon storage, which looks to me to be more, but also the other, oil quarries that are used for part of their manufacturing process that could be cleaned out and used as reservoir. The storage to me is probably as important as their water, they're pumping eighteen hundred gallons a minute plus back into the Long Swamp Creek, they, they're concerned that they're having infiltration into the quarries from Long Swamp Creek, I'm hoping part of their infiltration is from groundwater that's been part of the process, part of the concern for years, such as the, the mines in Marble Hill flooded because of groundwater. And the water that's in the well that is in Marble Hill is groundwater. And.
Long Swamp Creek has broken into the, uh, quarry, through the, through the road and then above the road, and in fact flooded one time.
Not long ago, I thought it was long, wasn't it?
Twenty-some years ago.
Well, they did, did it not long ago? And also during, during one of the hurricanes flooding, it actually flooded the entire mining process, which I was not aware of. But they wanna work with us, they feel like their problem is, is our answer to our problem. So with that, Mr. Turnipseed came up, and we spent another four or five hours with Mr. Free, it was a holiday, when David, uh, what day?
About four Thanksgiving.
Yeah, the day before Thanksgiving. And he, he carried, he carried David and Mr. Turnipseed and myself around through the same process that Mr. Klein and I had with very little variance. But we actually left it around two o'clock, got there at nine, left at two, so cancel that.
Took them three months to pump it out from flood.
So we're looking at the opportunity here, and if people talk about developing Jasper and, and not developing Jasper, our biggest concern is that sewer permit that we have and the lack of water that we have. We can always, Jasper was Cherokee County, and, and we have whatever county you like to pick the most, but without water, you're gonna be Jasper as we are today for a longer period of time, because once we hit two hundred more thousand gallons of sewer permit, and we're right at our water permit, so we can throw our hands up and say, well, you can drill wells, and you have set the tanks in Pickens County, but not much more for you. And so if we want to have any more than what we have now, is, we've gotta start moving on these things. We put off the sanitary sewer in oh-six, oh-seven, thank goodness we did, we'd been paying for all this permit that we, that we don't have now, with money that we're not making, so our, we'd had to really increase our rates, in which we pulled the plug then. So it's time, business is about to kick in, people are wanting sewer taps, water taps, gateway's about to explode, all the different properties we have, from the hospital site all the way down to the Sackett area is gonna have development, there's talk about development across the road again, so commercial development, and with the commercial development, you're also gonna have the residential development coming at us, and I wanna hate the day when I or someone else has to say, I'm sorry, we're out of permit, run a moratorium with the state, we can't issue any more water meters, any more sewer taps, and that's when growth stands the same, that's when we won't need lights on Main Street, that's when we stop growing, and that's when we go backwards.
Oh, they're already looking at it, it's already a problem.
The E P D is?
No, the people won't, they're not.
Oh, well, you're talking about people wanting it.
They're not gonna come with you only having two hundred thousand gallons of permit left, they, they need rooftops, and you're not gonna get rooftops with no permits, I mean, we don't have no permits left, we're out.
Well, we're not out yet, we got, we got, two hundred thousand goes a long way, we've only got eight hundred thousand, so.
Two hundred thousand.
That's a quarter of what we had to start with.
I look at what Ball Grounds got lately, and Jasper would have been in contention for that had we had the water and sewer.
Probably.
Without it, we don't, so if you're gonna do industrial, you gotta have permits.
What'd you say?
We have all the ball grounds.
I've said that many times.
I said it would be ball ground, but I love the jobs at Ball Grounds, I love it.
Well, that one factory, and that's Cherokee County, now that's really ball ground, that's a big catalyst to that.
Yeah, they just moved across the highway.
But with that, they would all let you sit right there, and I'm going to jump the street signs, which Lonnie's already referred to, and go to Lonnie behind us with what he's about to show you, our GPS, our G I S mapping is in play, and what he's about to show you is about to give you a great insight as to what David was talking about, for is our mapping, our, our water lines, our sewer lines, and he's probably doing it now, he's doing a little bit on Donny, Lonnie, you know who he is.
Okay, um, this is what y'all approved, I spent the last three days with a company going over, I'm a little slower than that guy would, he's been doing it for a lifetime.
He was good.
But, right here, the first shot, that's all the water lines that I have listed and in place, and that's about eighty percent of the water.
How many miles is that?
Okay, what we can do is.
I thought you already had that added up.
Uh, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a hundred and eighty-two miles, but you can take this formula here and go through it, and it will bring up the mileage, exactly, that's what has been put in the computer, okay? You can take that, I have a layer that, fire hydrants, that's all the fire hydrants that have been located, there's more to be put in here, and right now, on this program, there's four hundred and sixty fire hydrants that is on this, we can take the fire hydrants off.
Show, show, go to your overlay at this point, let them know what they're looking at.
So.
Yeah, give, give us, there we go.
Okay, um, this down here is the Cherokee County line, this is Henderson Mountain, this is over at Madison Ridge, five fifteen up through here, this is out of Hill City, Stiber's Road, this is going on up, Arbor Hills, all of that's in there.
You see, Gray and you and the bent tree lake up in the corner there, it's got.
Okay, I'm gonna take the water lines off, and all of this is sewer manholes that have been put into the computer, there's a total of five hundred and seventy-eight that's been placed, to give you an idea.
So all the big manholes is?
I think it's.
All right, I gotta, I was making a little joke.
Uh, but you, you got all your manholes here, and then you can install the sewer lines, and the sewer lines, they're probably half done, forty to fifty percent installed, and we're up to, I think, forty-three miles of man, of sewer line, and it's about half done, and.
You see, where some of these are not connected yet, as far as mapping is concerned, well, these may be, but.
So you can, this also, all of. So you can, this also, all the lift stations will be, got all of them listed, let me turn this off. All the lift stations, that's coming up 515, down at Rocco's, Liberty Lane, down at Cross from Shiloh Church, 108, Sackets, there's the plant we have at Nelson, and then you can always put that back on there. So all the black squares are lift stations. You've done seen the water storage tanks. We also have, everything in light blue is property that belongs to the city of Jasper. All this is city of Jasper property, everything, so we can pull this up and see exactly, right here is Darcey and Park, right here. And you can, we've got it to where we can pull this up. And you've got all the names of any properties anywhere in Pickens County, that's like the tax digest.
So the rooftops, that's what they count.
Yeah, what's online, will this be online eventually?
No, this will already be online. We've got a question to the company as far as people inside the city, like Rachel and David and Charlotte, they're working on right now, I think there's seven different stations that this can be sent to.
This is licensed.
But if you just send it to them and all they do is pull it up and look at it, you don't have to buy a license. The license is for the base station that does all the changes and the alterations in it.
But you want a limit who can make the change.
Right.
You want to have one.
We've got one category that's for, I'm calling it street signs. We need the actual roads with the names of the roads on it. That program has not been submitted yet to this computer. He's going back to North Carolina as quick as they get that program ready, they're going to tap into this and install it, and I'll have that. And then, such as, can actually physically go in here, if we have one of the city employees out here putting up street signs, they can give me a list, I can actually go on the street and put that sign and make a notation. It was installed on 11/30/17 by Adam Howard, and, I mean, this is unlimited. I mean, it just goes on and on and on. And I, for one, I'm very appreciative, something that we got to do is, when the company took my handheld drawings that I spent two years drawing up, okay, they took it, put it in, well, some of the drawings were a little closer, they brought them up closer, like this, well, that made the line or the valve or something offset more than what it should be, because they didn't know what pixel and everything I was using. So something that we've already started doing the last three days, we have a GPS system that plugs into the side of the computer, we've been going out and actually standing where these manholes are at, hitting a button, and then I can take their drawing that's digitized and put it exactly where it ought to be. By the time, we're talking about several manhours, out of the area and setting at the desk, but we can actually put this exactly where it needs to be. We took a, from Arbor Hills, you'll see right here, we took some plans that was back there, I just went back there and grabbed one roll of plans, okay, on the sewer, here's a manhole, there's the sewer lines that was on that particular set of plans. I started putting in meters, all those little orange dots are meters, if you bring them up. And we can actually go out and everywhere there's an orange dot, locate that meter with a GPS, and it's exact.
And that's great, that's great for training meter readers, to be able to show them that we're exact, because those meters are not easy to find. Arbor Hills is pretty fine, but most locations are not. Well, before we go any further on this, an example of a question that comes to City Hall is, where is, call it a piece of property, is there sewer in the area?
Put the pointer over top of the panel, cover it so they don't give you the latitude on that.
They come to you and say, is there sewer in the area? Well, let me pull them out, so I'll try to show you. Well, this right here is going to be one-stop shop, you can show people, there's not sewer at Philadelphie Road, and where's your closest? Well, it's in, it's at Walmart. How much will it cost to be there, go there? And you can actually pull some lines and say, well, without getting an engineer involved, it's going to cost probably about $40 a foot for gravity, to get, how much it's going to cost.
How many feet you got?
So make some quick decisions on, do I want to develop that property or not?
Exactly, Bill's office.
Pardon?
Exactly, Bill's office.
About Walmart.
Okay, and something else it does is, on the zoning, the city hasn't had since Q Pub had changed their zoning, we haven't been able to sit down here and tell people what the zoning was. We had to call Roy Dobbs' office and get him to look it up and everything. With this program, we can have it on here, we can...
That's not true. I got the map, this official zoning map.
We can click on that right there, and the zoning is highlighted right here, and so that is R1. And we have went out and checked other lots by doing this in the last three days, and every one of them has come back like they should.
Our rail is not on them.
So we, not only do we have utility locations, and we will have roads, we also have zoning, and, I mean, it's a great tool, but again...
What if they had arrows?
Excuse me?
What if they had arrows?
Arrows.
Pointing doors.
You can put arrows on here. I've got a cheat sheet down there that tells me how to do that.
And it flows down here.
I know, right? But we do have, we can put arrows on it.
That's big.
Yeah, we can do that.
It's slow.
But going out and doing the GPS and finding it exactly and lining up the photographs, it's going to be great.
Any questions on this, Councilman?
How long do you anticipate we get it all?
Three or four years. I mean, I'm serious, this is going to be.
It's like us, it's the growing, changing.
It's always.
It's going to be something, I mean.
It's going to be useful right away. Yesterday I called Lonnie, we broke a line, cut a line over on Hood Road, and since he was looking the maps, he actually had the location for us, they called you at the same time, and called Charlotte at the same time, and we actually had to dig one out that was paved over off of North Ridge to find the valve, and with this, we'd be more specific, and the information will become a lot more reliable as time goes on. It's going to be operational.
No one.
Just you. Just me right now.
Well, the question was asked.
I'm sorry.
Charlotte, that's why I was asking, I didn't know that all he was, because I'm not a kid.
They wanted to get this set up and wanted me to get used to the program. That's really, he's been down here for three days from Wilmington, North Carolina, and then he's gone back, they're doing a, see, you know, what they can do about getting the different stations, like David at the water plant, Charlotte at maintenance, the office personnel here. I mean, this, Terry could sit here and answer a lot of questions. Rachel, when it comes to zoning meters, somebody, one meter reader's out.
Would that be an additional purchase eventually?
They, they may be a fee, but it's not going to be nothing like this, nothing like this. They said that where this cost much was a licensing and starting from scratch and digitizing everything, and the other is just going to be a station they can view only. So they're, you know, they're probably going to be a charge, I'm sure they will be, but the guy that was down here told me, he says, you know, he said, I really don't think that it's going to be nothing like what you've already spent, nowhere near.
You take that map right there and download it into this program, and you'll have a copy of your white water plant and your footprint. How'd you do your mapping, how'd you plot this into your mapping, I mean, the one that you copied.
Does it scan into it, or how are you doing it?
The one I, what you mean is every...
When you put our plan in Arbor Hills and overlay it in there, this is our white water pickup plant, how would you be able to take that white water pickup?
I actually, on the Arbor Hills project, I actually have the plans down there, and I sat here at the table, brought it from the paper over here. Yeah, we can do the same thing with that.
Yeah, I was just asking, what'd you have to do, were you scanning these to put in there?
No, basically setting it in here and putting it in. And John, that does give a score of longitude, and all that.
Oh, I was telling Sonny, like with our system, we can load it on the switch, anybody downstream, we can grow a call, so your water will be back on it.
But we got to get one first, it took a while first.
Right. It's going to be a lengthy process.
Yeah, that was back in the, boy, it turned into the first, other century.
Listen, you just make a couple of...
And I, actually, my... The question was asked earlier about putting this on the website, would it be available? There's no reason you couldn't put that on the site, and maybe there's some things because of just security, you don't want to have people know, but...
This company don't make, and they don't sell to individuals or anything, this is a governmental project.
But if you had the, if you had this, this on our website, could people access it?
Similar to the tax maps.
Kind of like the Q Pub, though, where people could access it on the...
I don't know, I mean, we can have.
And I, you know, and I'm sure there's some things, you probably don't want anybody to know where some of the water stuff is.
I don't know.
So if you don't want to put that...
He's going to figure that first.
Well, maybe another one of those things, you just have to, once you get it set...
As we progress, we can look at it.
To turn what, if you want to...
Yeah.
Kind of like with some of our systems, something that says certain parts of the county.
1980.
Really? I bet that's when they paid the rent, maybe, I don't know. Seriously.
It's like the mayor.
Well, no, because, see, our H21 is still 1931.
The water tank, Woodbridge tank is 1931. Lonnie, thank you, we've left you, we went off to something else. This is very impressive, what this is today, with a lot of things that we're trying to find. Next item is, Dave, did you talk about the valve? I remember you said the valve, it might have been somewhere else, the fire hose.
We come in just a little bit under budget, we didn't have to do quite as much as we thought, I think I approved 12,000, and should have been around 10 or 11,000. So we were under budget on that, got it complete, got the old hydrant cut off. Was surprised that it was not transat line, it was actually steel line, and surprised also that it was a hydrant actually has the date of 1918 on it, and I don't know if it laid on somebody's jar for 20 years, and they come in there and put it in or what, but that was what was on the old hydrant. So it could not be repaired, the stem was bent too far over, so it could not be repaired, so we just cut it off at the bottom, welded it down, come over and put in a brand new hydrant there, and the guy come out, stayed a little bit by the jar, so we worked on it.
Oh, my gosh.
How about the street signs, Lonnie, where we were little mugs?
The street sign?
Yeah, let's go back to it real quick, we skipped it, but you did talk about it earlier.
Okay, you know, we did, Council did vote to order some signs, they should be here in two weeks, more or less.
Dave, you can go to if you want to be on.
Got 35 orders, and then we'll start putting them up as quick as they come in.
Anything special on them, city logo or anything?
Well, we have, I mean, the company didn't come up, you know, I was going ahead and getting some ordered, and, you know, if we want a logo, then that's something that Council, Mayor, whoever needs to come up with so we can add it to it.
Get these up, let us look at them, make a decision, make some calls.
Good.
What'd you say about logos?
Some of the cities have logos on the street signs, street markers.
Okay.
That's very neat.
I'll look at it.
I mean, you see the veil and the stuff and Alpharetta, I mean, they, a lot of the cities throw those on there. Your brain is yourself.
Coming down Louisiana.
Wasn't that prison?
Everything already starts, I mean, all over the world.
Yeah, out of me, Sonny's not here tonight, put my name on it, I Love New York, we'll be approving their alcohol license, I think the one going to start with beer and wine. Alcohol license renewal will be coming to you Monday night, be the last chance for alcohol renewal, we'll not have a meeting if people miss. Annexation of AEMC will come before you, we had the public hearing for our McLeod electorate, and there was no one here complaining about it, and we installed the new member, Luke Copeland, and Mr. Walker was appointed as chairman of the planning commission because Mr. Gorley resigned before the last one, or at the last one. Appalachian Trail construction, talked to some of you, we were going to just pave that with the last contract, and the elevations were so bad, just paving, it wouldn't have been much work, and it happened that there, next to the property was some of the best Georgia red clay you could imagine, and for very little expense compared to hauling that kind of clay to the site, we were able to raise the elevation, and we've hauled other dirt less desirable, Alf, you're looking at, we took your red dirt, we give you dirty dirt, but it's good dirt, it'll tack, and we're packing it back in for them, and building both properties up together where that property is commercial property. And also, it's making property, there's an article came out in the paper today, Dan got ahold of him before I got ahold of you guys and told, tell you, and I've actually got a copy of that to give you, I meant to give it to you prior to... Here's your article, if you've read, got the paper today, but it shows Dan's drawing, you want to... And there's that one. And I'm giving you this, I drew this, the problem's going to be, once we get this road built, is coming off of Holly Street from, coming from the direction of Roper Funeral Home, because we'll force traffic all the way around the circle, which is going to be close to a half a mile, a little less than a half a mile, to get 15 feet to go west on AW Los Boulevard. So I'm passing this out to show you a rough drawing that I have done, to show aroundabout at the top of the hill there, next to the canary, behind the school, coming off, that would allow vehicles to go around and go Industrial Boulevard, and the ones who wanted to come to town, they would hit the new Appalachian Trail, and using some of Dan's arrows would work, but he don't show that traffic can go both way on Holly Street between the cemetery and the school, for the future, for the near future. And ultimately, when the road gets built, the big project, we call it, the DOT 53 project, this will enhance it, and I believe if we have this done properly, by the time they get there, they will not try to carry 53 east through the middle of the church's property. they will not try to carry, uh, fifty-three east through the middle of the church's property. And hopefully, if you read the article, I talked, discussed with Dan, this is gonna be a great area for sidewalk, underground utilities, street lighting and all of our drainage for that area. And this area could be a focal point, uh, for the town versus, uh, that's the area behind the church.
So where's the roundabout, right there coming up?
You see this.
Right past the hospital?
I, I just, I just, I took white out, made you an idea that you're gonna, I didn't do any.
That's all high school, so you don't go all the way.
So right there we turn.
Yeah, that, that's gonna be drawn up a lot better once we get to that point. I have talked with, I've not talked to Carlton Wilson yet, but we're gonna need land from the school. We're gonna need land from the canary side. We're gonna need land from the church. And we're gonna need a little bit of land from the, uh, existing, what used to be the daycare. Now it's up in there, what it's gonna be, I think it's gonna be more of a detox center.
I thought it was gonna be a little light old school.
They changed their mind, it's now going to be go and detox, for lack of a better word. I won't try to be their advertisement here, but they, that, they're not gonna be a school. And he, I met with the owner of that property and he's willing to work with the city to encroach on his property some in order to get that roundabout attached to a big roundabout. And from there, you can go Roper Funeral Home, you go to town, you can go to your house. Uh, Dr. Proctor, from that little area, you can, it can feed off to a lot of different directions.
Does detox require special zoning or some sort of?
Yeah, I don't know if they're ever gonna open it up, but I don't think so. It's commercial C-two property. But what we wanna look at here is that the grant property, which is past this property, uh.
Somewhere up here.
If you follow around to, to your right there, around my little wide, yeah, that, that property becomes commercial property. It's gonna, it's gonna be, uh, have a lot of traffic in that area that would encourage that being developed. And also the property where we took the red clay from is gonna be commercial property, could be commercial property. And that entire area, if you were to come off with a couple of access roads going into the grant property, uh, that property could be commercial all the way, all the way to Middletown Springs very easy. Could be. Did you get too close to somebody now?
Getting pretty close.
That's what we're talking about. Not in my backyard, but you have a lot of areas there that could be bought and restructured as far as commercial property, especially to Middletown Springs.
So, so what's a realistic timeframe for?
We're gonna try to have this ready to pave, the, the spring paving and.
Including the roundabout?
Uh, we'll be working on that. That's gonna be a possibility. Gotta get some property, gotta get some property changed. Uh, like I said, I am not Dr. Pro, Dr. Pro, uh, Dr. Wilson. He'll be able to see me on TV saying that.
Go get ready.
Uh, but I, I think they're pretty much finished with their obstacle course, whatever you would like to call that, climbing apparatus.
I haven't seen that used for years.
I think, I think they may even give it up. They have, have to have a license and they were doing it down at the middle school. So I think at one point in time they, they consolidated it all down there. And I think maybe the first metal's kind of driving that and maybe it's on the top.
But that's kinda where we're going with that, guys. Uh, Joe Walker will be here Monday night to make a presentation to you about our liability insurance. Uh, the budget will be presented by Ms. Lisa, again, for the final adoption of our budget for two thousand eighteen. Uh, JMA Council, uh, see, hopefully they wanna be on the agenda about the New Year's Eve celebration. Uh, I was going to have Kurt here tonight. Uh, we called him, he couldn't be here, so, uh, I'll give him another call to make sure he knows he's gonna be on the agenda to discuss, uh, JMA, Jaffa Merch Association, uh, trying to replace the city's efforts on the, on the, uh, New Year's Eve celebration. The Hood Park property was purchased yesterday, paid for yesterday?
Yeah.
Council approved it, purchased last month, buying the property where the Hood Road Pump Station and sewer line, uh, available, are located. Paid the eight thousand two hundred nineteen dollars for it. And Lonnie, tomorrow you're gonna register that account, I forgot to tell you. Uh, and comprehensive plan meeting with Ethan Calhoun, we had that. April yesterday? And he went to county's office after that. And what day is the meeting gonna be?
I think it's twelve.
December twelfth, I'll let more specifically for you. So, and we'll be, uh, getting ready for that as well. We're gonna review the last comprehensive plan to see what we accomplished and what we still have to do. And with all this information, council, I'll have you an agenda ready sometime tomorrow afternoon.
All right, give you a update on the, uh, my little committee been trying to get with Bill.
Let me touch base before you do that, one thing that, that you spoke. John called me April yesterday and has agreed to meet with myself and their forestry group. We're gonna try to take out some trees on Burnt Mountain Road that are, that, if we gotta call right now, we wouldn't be shocked, would we, John? Uh, if it fall across the, the lines, because we got slope in the hill and the trees are sloping.
Our train to get it, we're gonna have to block the road, so it's gonna be a major project.
It's better than five or six projects at different times. But they're okay, John, now you, you're ready.
But, um, but, um, still haven't been able to get with Bill on the other, but I guess we'll try to have it ready for January.
Working on what now, did you say?
The blight.
Blight.
Blight, okay. Just, just can't get the bill, bill to, to already catch.
Okay.
Have we heard any, are you finished? I'm sorry, I just jumped right in. Breath and I'm there. Uh, have we heard anything back on the Perro property, the inspection? Has it been done?
Brad was on.
Brad's been doing that.
Brad was gonna be doing, uh.
I've not, I've not met with him, ordered that up. What was, what was ordered in the council meeting?
Yeah, they, they decided to use.
Brad?
Yeah.
And I.
And I could, I.
Did you get my email with the, uh, question?
Oh, I.
I'll make a phone call to Brad tomorrow.
I'll look for it.
Uh, I can only tell you when I sent it.
A little crazy.
All right.
Oh. I sent it on the seventh. Cannot believe it came this.
Oh, boy.
Tell me when.
Yeah, just. Uh, the very seventh.
Probably there, I, I'd get it long by this.
Um, and then, um, downtown development study, we're still working on. Uh, I just wanna keep it everybody's.
Okay, have y'all had a chance to meet with the personnel policy yet?
Um, no, I know that, uh, Ann spoke with, uh, Stella, but I, but we had met, trying to plan out what we wanna attack first.
You want me to leave you on the agenda?
Um, if you wanna keep it rolling, you would.
Okay, and it's like you say, we still wanna meet. Okay. Uh, council, with that, I'll get ahold of Brad tomorrow, somehow.
When you put that on the agenda too, is new business.
Make it know that, Lisa.
Week, uh, which will be.
Uh, I forgot all about that little request. Somebody just fell through my, what was my notes I had?
Well, and I got bad information, somebody told me he'd already been over there.
He had, he had when we bought it.
Yeah, I knew that.
And he's mainly looking for asbestos, per your request, if you recall. Uh, and he found very little of any.
Probably before asbestos, when it's. No. Probably below, in the board town.
Where, where we would have expected.
Any other business council would like to discuss?
I got mine.
See you guys munted, appreciate you coming in. Sorry it takes so long to get through this. And done more business tonight than.
You do.
Yes. You can leave. Thank you. You okay?